Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the June 7, 2017 meeting of the Danville-Bull County Planning and Zoning Commission. We thank you for your presence and taking an interest in the business of planning and zoning in the community. As tradition, we'll begin our meeting with prayer. If you bow with me, please. For God and Father in heaven, we thank thee for this most beautiful day and all the blessings of it, the health you've given us, this community we live in, this country we live in, the safety and protection you've granted us, the freedoms we enjoy. We pray that you continue to bless us in those things, and we would remember that all of them always come from you. We pray for our servicemen and women who are continuing to serve our country and protect our freedoms, you would watch over and care for and protect them. Let those conflicts be resolved and bring them home to their loved ones as soon as possible. We pray that you will be with us as commission this day, that the decisions we make will be for the betterment of this community and for all those involved. Continue to watch over and care for us, guide, guard, direct us, help us walk the uneven journeys of life. Forgive us when we fail you for times that we do. Christ's name we pray, amen. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes of May 3, 2017.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes.
Clayton moves we approve.
I'll second.
Susie seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous. Under new measures, we have several minor plats. We'll just take all of these one at a time, Glasscock Property, Caldwell Lane. Jenny, if there's any issues on any of these, just go ahead and speak up to let us know as we go through them.
There's no issues on this.
Okay, thank you.
I make a motion to approve.
Susie moves we approve.
One second.
Terry seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous. Item B, King Property Waterworks Road.
So Kendall did this one. It's also, all four changes were made. You might notice just a 60-foot from the iron pin to the building line, and that was, you know, one of the changes made, just to make sure there was enough room for the 50-foot building setback. But everything else, everything's technically correct.
Thank you. Jeff moves we approve.
I'll second.
Susie seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous. Item C, Mary Reed, Old Mitchellburg Road.
This plat's also technically correct. They were just abolishing an old property line and making a new one.
Motion to approve.
Jeff moves we approve.
I'll second.
Susie seconds.
I'll fight over it.
Question, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous. Thank you. Item D, John Key, Old Highway 150.
Okay, yes, we went over this at technical review. All six changes were made, and I guess Dale, did Mike not want to give address?
Right.
Okay. In the past, Mike was giving addresses to all new properties, and I guess now is he waiting till building's going on?
Yes, they are gonna, the new purchasers are going to build on this property, but they don't know where yet. So Mike said he would rather wait till he knew where they wanted to build as to where to put the driveway or the address for the driveway.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Terry moves we approve.
Second.
And somebody, Clayton seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous. Robert Moss, Drive 4 Road, Terry's there.
I'll make one comment, I guess, before Dale. On your plats, you probably noticed, most of them don't have the owner signed. However, he was just having some trouble signing, and Lisa and I have enough to fi, well, for our records, and we'll have Jerry sign these. So we do have the owner's signature on enough copies. Just might not be the ones you have. All other changes were made, and I guess you checked on a lot of address, right?
Yes. This particular piece of property is actually being, it's not being combined with a, an adjacent property, but an adjacent property owner is buying it. It is a standalone tract, but they're not going to build on it, so he did not want to give an address for it at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Terry moves we approve.
Second.
Jeff seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous.
Thank you.
Kev's there. Barry Bush, Webster Road.
This plat was technically correct as well.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Clayton moves we approve.
One second.
And Terry seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Try to keep it shorter next time, Nancy.
I did my best.
Okay. Item three, final plat amendment for NGLP Danville LLC, John Hill Bailey Park.
Now, you probably recognize this plat. This is TransNav and went through a month or two ago, and the only change from the former plat, they had put a 100-foot building line, and this new plat has a 40-foot. And in this zoning, 40-foot is technically correct, so they were allowed to make the change. All other changes were made. In the top left corner, we will need the engineer's signature. Is there gonna be a letter of credit? No? Okay.
My move we approve pending getting the city engineer's signature and the letter of credit.
Motion's been made to approve with those requirements.
I'll second.
Susie second. Question, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous. Thank you, sir, for closing this door. Thank you for closing this door, thank you. Appreciate it. That's a good thing to do, yeah. Been there, been there, not now. Item four, free and final plat, Wilson and Thompson Properties, Danville.
All five items, changes were made. You will notice in the bottom left-hand, it says NA across the certificate for the licensed engineer, and that's NA because there's no changes to the impervious surface. This building is the old Main Street Furniture, is that right, Nancy? And they're just dividing the building into two properties, so that's why you see NA here. Usually you need it signed.
My move we approve.
Terry moves we approve.
I'll second.
And Clayton seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous. Thank you, Nancy. Item six, Wilderness Trace Distillery.
Did we miss our file?
Did I miss that? Sorry, I checked ahead of time. Item five, excuse me, Kendall. I checked it before I got to it, I'm sorry. Item five. Site plan, Daniel Manufacturing.
Okay, and just before we hit all the site plans, and I'd like the engineers maybe to come forward and share a little bit, especially about this project, but at cutoff, we didn't receive any of the landscape plans. And when you do a site plan, you do need to turn in a landscape plan. So each site plan today, you'll need to approve contingent upon landscape plan meets the guidelines. Just for all three, so we have time to review those.
Morning.
Good morning.
Want to share with us what's going on, what you're doing here, just for our...
Yes, sir. My name is William Horton. I'm with Denim Life in Lexington, Kentucky. Daniel Manufacturing would like to do another building addition onto their existing facility at Minor Road. Along with that addition, they're gonna be adding some, some new surface for truck routing to come in and be able to dock at the building for loading and unloading purposes. The landscape drawing that we turned in, that's based on the surface area, the new surface area that we'll be adding. Calculations are based upon that, how many trees we would need, large trees and medium-sized Parking, we've met all the parking requirements that need to be met based on our previous submittal last month, so we didn't need to add any more parking. We had exceeded those numbers with our approval on the last plat, site plan that came through in May, so we haven't added any new additional parking with this submittal here today. I'll be glad to answer any additional questions you may have.
And I guess from the technical aspect, we will need to approve contingent upon three signatures. Form two, three, and four need signed.
Okay. Could you refresh my memory which ones those are?
Yes, and you can look at the plat today. Number two is a surveyor's certificate.
Okay.
I didn't see the surveyor's, oh, here it is. Here's the seal. So we have the seal, but we need the surveyor to sign Form Two.
Okay.
We need the engineer to sign Form Three, and we need the owner to sign Form Four.
Do we not have an engineer's signature on there with the seal? I think we have one at the bottom.
That's Form Eight. Form Three is a city engineer, Earl Coffey.
Okay, all right.
And that was not on here. You got all the utility companies.
Yes, ma'am.
So we'll need those three signatures.
Is the owner's signature not there either? Because I signed one, I know.
It's in one place, but it's not under Form Four, so we'll need that as well, so. And sir, did you state at our meeting that you're planning to build this, this addition before what was approved last month?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make the motion we approve contingent on getting the three signatures and getting formal approval of the landscaping plan.
Terry moves we approve. Contingent on those.
I'll second.
Signatures and landscape. Clayton seconds.
Yes.
Question, discussion on the motion to approve contingent upon those requirements. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six, site plan Wilderness Trace.
Mark, Kendall.
Good morning. So the project that you're looking at, we've submitted in the past three or four different plans for this site, and the, the business, I guess, continues to grow and expand, and with this plan, they would pretty much make full use of the, I think it's 33 acres that they own now, and the main, the main thing you see that they're adding to this project, they're gonna have three new barrel warehouses. They're making an addition to the distillery building, which pretty much doubles the footprint of the distillery and significantly increases the production. I can't remember, I think it's more than double, but... So you've got a building addition and three new buildings that are being shown, and some just access to go between the warehouses. The warehouses themselves are spaced more than 200 feet apart, and that's largely just for fire protection reasons, and that's, I think, a permitted requirement through the I would like to try to get the landscaping addressed today if we can without a contingency, and between tech review and even up until now, there's been a little bit of uncertainty as to how to interpret the landscape ordinance. And I think that the landscaping statistics and the proposed landscaping that you see on that plan, I don't think they're, I don't think they accurately reflect what's required. But I've, I've got some copies of what the landscape ordinance says and how it addresses the use of existing tree canopies that are there at the property, and I'm just gonna pass out a copy of this for each person to use their own judgment as to what it says.
And I'll make a comment. The last three times when I looked up Wilderness Trace coming through, they use the existing tree canopy as 100% of the required landscaping, and the commission approved that, and that's If you look at this at 9.3 of the landscape screening, I was just pointing out our ordinance, and the commission can make any decision they want to. You can approve using all the existing tree canopy once again. If you read 9.3, it talks about using mature trees, and you can reduce half of the required landscaping, you know, you can reduce the required landscaping by 50%. So 50,000 was required, so according just to our rules, 25,000 square footage of landscaping would be required per our ordinance. So you can, you know, this is just recommendation, that's just the technically correct part, and I think Kendall made some different plats with that requirement met as well.
So the plat that you have shows us adding new plantings, and the owner's not opposed to that, and they've actually already purchased 40-some-odd holly trees that are gonna be planted on the north boundary. And, but if, if you look at the existing tree canopies that are there, the existing tree canopies that are there account for 64,000 square feet, and the requirement for landscaping on an industrial site is, is that we provide tree canopies that are 10% of the project area. And so the project area is not the entire acreage of the property, but the acreage that's being disturbed, regraded, built upon. And so 10% of the disturbed area for the entire project, proposed and existing, would be 50,000 square feet. So 10%, the requirement would be 50,000. We have existing tree canopies that exceed that, they are 64,000. And so in the past, our, our request has been that, that, that the existing tree canopy is gonna be preserved, and so it should be sufficient to provide the landscaping that's needed rather than going, you know, using a portion of it, 50% of it, and then also doing new plantings to create a forest out there. So the, the nature of this project, regardless of what we do as far as planting, there's gonna be a lot of green space, and the reason that will be maintained is because these warehouses require spacing and separation of 200 feet between, between them, and so you're gonna have a lot of grass that's gonna get mowed regardless of what we do with trees. And the reasoning for the spacing is, is fire protection, and I'm not saying that planting a bunch of trees is gonna allow the spread of a fire, but it, it would be different than if it were, if it were grass. But, so any, any which way you wanna approve it, I have copies of the same site plan with all the signatures that show no new tree plantings. And it basically has statistics on it that says that the existing tree canopy is this, and it, you know, exceeds the, the 10% requirement, the existing tree canopy does. So I have these, if you're willing to approve that today, and I'll be glad to pass these out so that you can see those same statistics. Otherwise, we can, I can request that you approve it contingent upon getting clarification in the upcoming week, once Polly gets back, or having us change or amend the tree, tree Any other more important questions, I'd be glad to answer.
I guess help us understand why you want to approve not adding the landscape. I mean, you sound like it doesn't make any difference to the owner either way. Maybe I'm misinterpreting that, but...
Well, I think that if the owner, I think approving it...
Can you give a magnitude of the cost if we don't approve the exemption? I mean, is it $20,000, $50,000 more landscaping cost, or is it $5,000?
They've already bought a lot of the trees, so that's...
That's what I'm trying to say.
That was stuff they're gonna do regardless.
Why is it an issue if they've already bought all the trees?
Yeah. I think that, I think that the statistics on the plan that you have aren't, aren't done correctly, and so I'd rather not have that plan recorded. So I think that plan needs to be changed regardless, the statistics on it. I think that this would be perfectly okay to approve and put in on file, or I think that we could change those statistics and, and record it as well, but...
Statistic.
That's right.
I guess another question I would have, Jenny, is when you get a facility like this, it is building in stages, you know, like, you know, we're barrel warehouse this year, barrel warehouse, barrel warehouse next year. How often can you take that 50% credit? I mean, can you take it time after time after time, or can you only use it once? You know, once, once you take that credit, it's done, and if you add another barrel warehouse, then you have to add new trees, because you've only, you've already taken that credit once, or, or can you keep taking it over and over and over?
Well, yeah, because the last three, they've used all of the tree canopy. I think, didn't you take a full, of all the buildings, a full square footage of all the buildings? Right. So it was almost a subtotal of all the buildings altogether right now, and it exceeds, exceeds the requirement at this point.
I think Terry's exactly right. You know, if, if we were to do this one building at a time, every time we submit a site plan, okay, we can only use 50% of our tree canopy, and then we have to add new can, new, new tree plantings, and then we resubmit the plan, and all of a sudden, we still can't use, we can only use 50% of our existing trees, and we have to add more tree plantings. Before you know it, you've got a forest out there with no industrial use.
And that's probably why the commission passed it three times to just keep using the existing tree canopy. If you passed it one more time to use the existing, it would be the last time, because it's maxed out at this point, at 10% with the buildings. It would be the last time.
I won't say it's the last time, because this project changes so much, but, you know, it, I mean, we could obviously come back with a change or a revision to this, or they could add on to the distillery building. They really can't add on to the warehouses because they're spaced so that, you know, you can't really put them closer together than what they already are.
They'll have to buy more property.
They'll have to buy more, and, and that's what they did the last time, so...
So this is my last comment. So I called Kendall yesterday and just told him if you wanted to go by our code, that he would just have to change that line there about the landscaping, and it would need to say 25,178, and that's something we talked about at technical review to meet our, our ordinance.
Which line are you talking about, the 50%?
Right, you take 50% of the 50,000.
1,016.
355.
Oh, 355, yeah, I'm sorry. So you have another set of drawings that have all the signatures and...
And I think in this, this drawing, it's important to note that the existing tree canopy exceeds 10% of what would be required as far as new plantings if we weren't using any existing trees.
Is it proper for us to look at that?
I don't know. I don't know. That's the only change, is that one line. What you're looking at is what Kendall's always proposed and I told him I didn't know if that would be approved again and that's why he wrote a landscaping plan out. So yes, that should be fine.
I just want to ask a stupid question here. So our issue that we're having is just the calculation of the tree canopy, whether we're saying, one saying that the, there's 67,000, is what you're saying, Kendall?
The existing tree canopy is 60.
65?
64,631 square feet.
Yes. And if there were no trees on the property and we had to plant new trees, then we would be required to meet a 10% canopy area, which would be 50,000, which is actually less than our existing canopy. However, there's existing trees and depending on how you interpret the ordinance, that's what I handed out earlier, supposedly we can use only 50% of our existing tree canopy to satisfy the landscaping requirement. And so regardless of how many trees were out there, we would still have to come up with 5% of our disturbed area with new plantings. So if our site was entirely covered with trees, we would still have to come up with 5% new plantings.
Like Kendall said, if you go in there and it's a bare piece of land, you would be required to provide 50,000 square feet of canopy.
Yes.
And you have 64,000.
Correct.
Correct. I don't see an issue.
It shouldn't be a problem, it's the way it's written.
Yes.
Does the the owner have more property around that?
No, none at this time.
This is the only piece of property that they plan on developing.
Yes.
So in other words, this could, this should be the final decision about this, the canopy issue, right?
Yes.
So that's what I think you have to think about, just that. And if it, whatever needs to be done, if however, everybody feels about it, we should do that.
But you're saying there's still plant, there are planting some additional.
If you don't, yes, if you if you approve no new planning requirement, regardless of what you approve, they're still going to plant. They've bought 40 holly trees. So they're not bad guys. They're they're really good clients and they've done everything very well so far and they want it to be a beautiful place and it already is and they're going to, they're doing even more. So I don't think you can go wrong by just not requiring them to do anything with landscaping.
I'm okay with that. I don't know, how do we, how do we make that motion?
I think we just make a motion to approve it without any additional landscaping requirement.
Yep.
Based upon the new plat.
Yes.
I think you just make a motion that you allow them to take, apply the full existing tree canopy, square footage of 64,631 towards their required landscaping.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah.
Jeff moves, we approve using the the current canopy as as a fulfillment of the landscape requirement.
I see.
And David seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing not all in favor, votes unanimous.
No, if you have the, no.
Sure.
I'll I'll make more copies if she needs them for recording.
And she's going to get them off.
Yes. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kendall. Item seven, site plan, J K B Holdings, War Admiral. Morning, sir.
Morning, John Barber's here.
Chair, what is what you're doing here, John?
I build a fourplex. Was that your question, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry.
It's a fourplex site plan. There's a 150-foot K U easement on the upper side, that's where the building has to be squeezed in there. It's it's got a drainage ditch down at the lower end that, you know, we're real close to, but we're, you know, it's far enough away, it's okay.
Technically, okay, Jenny?
Yes, all seven changes were made and actually Gary Chetister, correct, brought a landscape plan in after T R S. Paula did review it and I looked at it and it was correct. He just needed to bring copies still, so you could just approve this plat.
You're talking about Gary, needs more income?
With the addition of the landscape plan?
Right, it it was already reviewed and it's fine.
So you need additional copies of the landscape plan?
Mm-hmm. We don't have any copies, no, he took one.
I move for approval, additional copies of the landscape plan provided.
Motion's been made to approve, requirements of landscape plan being provided.
I'll second.
Susie second. Question, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing not all in favor, votes unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair of Business, Plenary, Plat Renewal for Dave Coe, Section Two.
I'll move.
Jeff moves, we approve.
I'll second.
Terry seconds. Question, discussion on motion to approve. Hearing not all in favor, votes unanimous. Item two, Plenary, Plat Renewal, Crawford Springs.
I'll move.
Jeff moves, we approve.
I'll second.
Susie second. Question, discussion on motion to approve. Hearing not all in favor, votes unanimous. Item three, payment of bills.
Make a motion, pay the bills?
Clayton moves, we pay the bills.
Second.
Jeff seconds. Question, discussion on motion to pay bills. Hearing not all in favor, votes unanimous. And item four, April 2017 financial reports. Comment on those, Jenny?
No, but good news permits were up once again about $1,000 over what was expected.
Terry moves, we approve.
I'll second.
Clayton seconds. Question about approve financial report for April 2017. Hearing not all in favor, votes unanimous.
I'll make a motion, we go into executive session. Personnel?
Personnel. Motion's been made to go into executive session, discuss personnel.
Second.
Clyde seconds, all in favor, votes unanimous. Ladies and gentlemen, we will go back into regular session after our executive session. Jenny, would you stay for this, please?
Sure.
Thank you all. Clyde.
Okay, thank you.
We're being up here.
I want you right down here, right in the middle.
There is, and Jenny can explain this certainly much better than I, but an issue we need to discuss with regard to Paula's employment and some extended employment or pay for her to help with the training for Stephen Hunter when he arrives. So Jenny, tell us what you explain where we are, what we need to do, what we think.
So Paula has quite a bit of vacation sick time this last month. She's been taken four days and half days off. I talked to Jerry about that because I'm needing to come in on Fridays to catch up to try to get everything done and he's fine with that. Last week Paula let me know she only had 10 more days she could work. So I was kind of freaking out, talked to Susie some, talked to Jerry some, because it was already hard with her just going one day or two. So she has maxed out on her sick vacation. I looked in the book as far as what you can be paid out at the end of the year. Her last day's going to be the 31st. We want to make sure we have in the budget about $20,000. It's going to be about 15 for those two items plus associated taxes. I don't know what days are going to be her 10 days. If Stephen starts full-time July 17th, is that right?
He's going to start then, yeah, and I don't know if he's going to.
Forty hours or?
He's going to start and I think be full-time, but he's not going to be working five days a week, I don't believe, yet.
But he'll be full-time?
Yes.
Yeah, full-time, okay, good. So if she used her nine days to cover with him, that would just leave one day for me in seven weeks of any help at the busiest time of year. I'll be okay in the winter. So Paula offered, she could use her sick vacation four days a week. If you guys would be willing to pay her one day, she wouldn't have overtime, it'd be 40 hours. So she'd be paid 40 hours, she'd be here an average of one day per week. And then if she could use her vacation Tuesday through Friday, for example, that would help me out because then she could come in on a day we're open instead of using her sick time, the days we're open. It would help as much on Friday. So I was just talking to Jerry about different solutions. I'm coming in early, staying late, not getting breaks and you might not always get the phone answered. I'm going to disclose the window if I need to go eat or take a break. So it's really hard for me to do that because, you know, there's customers that I need to preserve my sanity because it's already gone. So anyway, there's just been a lot of extra drama too with her leaving. We had four open records requests, one took the all day. So anyway, I would love it for her to be able to be paid one day, that would be a good start. I typed up something if you want to see it. I only made three copies, but it was just kind of what she had offered. But I mean, she's, I'm not upset at her, I'm just kind of upset it's taken so long for Stephen to get here and there's, you know, nobody in the office really. Lisa is going to try to help him come in at much time and.
So how many additional days are we being asked to approve?
An average of one day per week.
Okay, and through the end of July?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're looking at eight, nine days maybe, ten at max maybe.
And and she won't go over 40 hours.
Right, and we can certainly accommodate that within the budget.
Right.
So it's just in all of it, the only issue is taking care of customer.
Would it matter if she went over 40 hours?
Would I start paying overtime and then?
She's, she's not.
The budget is, I don't think so, I don't know, Jenny, do you know?
I mean, she should be exempt.
If she's salaried, she should be exempt.
She's salaried, right?
She has a special contract that was made in 2009. I'd have to look up the copy where she got paid for any extra time period.
I'm thinking there was, there was something there.
So I think she overtime going over that.
Yeah.
I mean, I can look it up, but.
And I think it's, she's adamant about not working an extra hour over the required time that she's.
So this, Jenny, is just to cover standard office responsibilities, it's not to do further training with you or anything?
No. I mean, pretty much, I mean, busiest time of year, I'm going to be in the office myself. Lisa has so many things to be checking on. That would just give me one day of help. I'll probably still have to come in some Fridays just to catch up. Everything we do is dated. One Friday, I was certified 30, we had 55 letters, I had to go out for site plans and work adjustments and. Because basically you're doing Paula's work. I mean, Paula's working. With her while she's off. Right, and each day I just have to decide what's kind of more important and what can be put off or not put off. But everything is so scheduled and legal that we have to stay within requirements. I wish we'd known this ahead of time so Paula could have taken her days and passed instead of.
Yeah, I think this was a plan.
Yeah, established, yeah, yeah.
So I'm not mad at her, I just wonder why Stephen's taken so long to get here. Well. I guess he has another job.
He does, he does, and he had things that he had to get wrapped up with that other job. He said before he felt like he could leave it, he had just had obligations he had to take care of.
We will get by, but it's just not going to be, it's hard for me not answer that phone, it's hard for me to leave, somebody's here to say, hey, I'll be back in 10 minutes, I have to go to the bathroom, you know, it's.
I mean, I think.
When Stephen, I'm sorry.
I think pending the fact that we have the money in the budget, we can, you know, we're okay. But I think we should check with the attorney to see if. To make sure that that's indeed the case because otherwise we wouldn't be being as responsible as we should, should be to make sure that her contract says that. I mean, you know, she, I'm not saying she, it doesn't say that, but at the same time, it's just a check to make sure that that's what her contract says.
It says she can be paid, I know for sure, up to 40 hours at regular rate over the 32.
Well, yeah, but I mean.
Because that's what happened while we were funded.
If she's, if she's a salaried employee, how does that relate?
I don't think she is.
Okay, well, then 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 it's, then then that's.
Sorry, are we do or don't have to pay overtime? We don't have to pay overtime unless it's over 40?
She will not reach overtime.
Okay, so it's not an issue of overtime?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'll be eight regular workdays, eight regular work hours each time she works to come in one day, on average. She might take two weeks off and then come in two days.
So another question is, is when Stephen does get here, what's the transitional plan for him starting off? Is he just fresh and green? I mean.
Paula's going to be here.
I know he's experienced otherwise, so you're going to?
Paula's going to be here also.
Paula's going to be helping him with that transition?
She's supposed to and I don't know what's going on between them.
I'm trying to figure that out.
That's supposedly in the budget that we can do that.
It's in the budget, actually trained for six weeks.
Yeah.
She overlapped six weeks, so we have plenty of money for that. She has offered to be with him from the 17th through the 31st.
Okay.
She told me, he said he didn't need but two days and then she could help me more days, but I don't know, it's, I mean, I think.
So she's going to retire and then come back to work with him?
No, no, no. Her retirement got moved to the end of August 1st.
There we go, okay.
August 1st.
That's kind of clear.
Yeah, due to, due to the retirement issue with with retirement, it's up to new time.
I'll discuss that a little more.
Okay.
Okay, and I'll call Stephen also, just, I thought we knew, I thought everything would pan out by the end of June, but I had three days I'd asked off a year ago, once, two days before the August meeting, so it's July 31st, August 1st. So I'll tell Stephen that. I have all the administrative assistant things covered, I've taught Lisa how to do the package she helped today. Just director things will be covered, I'm expecting him to do the director things for that meeting.
True.
So I'll, I was letting you know that I'll call him and make sure he's, he'll be working two weeks.
Technical review will be covered.
He should be here, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
On that Thursday and I'll be back. I'm at Thursday, and I'll be back for the meeting on Wednesday for sure, in 10 minutes. So I just can't cover both the things, but I can cover the administrative system things with pretty.
And I think what Jenny has described here today absolutely nails what we've been trying to convince some commissioners madgers is about, that one person can't run that office.
Exactly.
That there is, there is, particularly this time of year, as Jenny said, maybe in January and February, but right now, I mean, it's just physically impossible. Jenny called me the other day and asked permission to close the window so she could go eat lunch. I said, close, I'm going to go eat lunch, but you know, she just, it was just her and nobody in.
Right, people waiting.
Exactly.
Somebody waiting, but they waited, you know, I just left it to her one night, so.
I mean.
I even offered, you know, that maybe we could get a temporary person just to answer the phone and sit at the window, but she said, you know, really that would not be of much benefit.
It doesn't do you any good if they get to you.
If they can't do anything, so.
Right, right.
Well, do we need a motion then?
Well, we're going to go back to regular session and make the motion, I think, to approve those eight days. And I don't know if we need to limit it to eight days or just, or maybe make it 10.
I guess that depends on the budget.
We're making a max, no more than 12.
Whatever, that's what I'm thinking.
Well, I think because of the fact that we're not using the six weeks of overlapping in directors, that, you know, the money's not really an issue to be at eight, 10, 12 days.
Right, right.
I don't think that would be a problem.
So I just, yeah, I think we need to, like Jeff said, put some sort of a cap on it, but I don't want to cap it at eight, because if we needed nine, or even 10, or whatever, yeah. We don't want to have to.
As long as it's legal, I mean, as long as it's.
I appreciate the help.
Right.
We appreciate what you're doing.
Sorry to hear your calls answered, I'm going to close up.
So we want to, what, put 15 days, Jeff, as a max or something?
What, what do you think, Jenny?
15 as a max, would that be okay? Any other questions or whatever before we go back to regular session?
So just to be clear, Paula's not going to work six weeks with the new guy?
No.
She is only, she told me last week she had 10 more days to work.
Okay, but he said he only needs two days anyway.
Well, he needs more than that, that's why I'll tell him, especially if you need one two days.
Yeah, I think he needs more than that too.
I would assume so, yes.
Yeah, I would think so too.
But he's a pretty confident guy.
Confident or cocky?
It's a fine line, doesn't it? No, I don't want to go.
I mean, he knows his planning and zoning stuff.
Oh, he knows.
He just doesn't know dandelion bullcalf.
Yeah, that's.
Right.
That's the only thing.
You're right.
He's studying it though.
Yes, he's studying.
We spent a lot of time with his big, he's studying stuff. He asked for it, he asked for it.
Yeah, he asked for it.
Also, if you need to take a break, you need to get lunch, close the window.
That's what I'm hoping.
I've not done that in the past, I don't have to.
Close the window, get away for an hour or whatever.
You have to.
You've got to take care of yourself.
I think that also sends a message to other factions in the government that, you know, there's, it doesn't look like it is.
I mean.
Everybody else in the building does it.
Yeah, they haven't walked a mile in those shoes yet.
We don't want to do it, especially only being open for days.
I don't think anyone's going to be upset. They show up at 12 o'clock and you're at the lunch.
It's her busiest time though, it's like lunchtime and stuff, so.
They run from their jobs to come.
Right, right, and I've been a business person, come here very upset before. It's like, those are my people.
Well, we do what we have to do, and I think you need to get you lunch.
Absolutely, break, yeah.
At least we'll kind of cover what she can, but sometimes she's really far.
Exactly, I mean, she's had.
She had three spots out in Forkland and then, you know.
And thank you for covering those responsibilities.
Yeah.
I really appreciate that, so thank you.
Show me enough to get by and.
Very good.
Any other questions or comments?
Want me to go there?
If you want to, I was going to, appreciate it. Open the door. Would any motions go back into regular session, and would any motion approve these 15 days?
All right.
Sorry about that. I got a little courage you got to deal with.
The margins are generated.
Jenny. Alex. We on yet? Good, thank you. Need a motion to go back into regular session?
So move.
Jeff moves to go back into regular. Clayton seconds, all in favor, vote unanimous. Folks, Jenny has talked to me about trying to manage the office with Paula being gone on vacation and was taking vacation in sick days, which you certainly entitled to, and there's a real struggle there. And so we have talked about having Paula come back in and pay her an extra day to work one of the four days of Monday through Thursday, just to simply help cover with Jenny and also help with the training of Stephen when he comes in. So if we don't do that, we're really going to be at a shortage there in the office of trying to keep things going like it should. As Jenny said, at times she's not been able to take a lunch break or other breaks as needed and has been having to come in on Fridays to do work that she just can't get done while Paula's been on vacation and Lisa's out in the field. And so it's a one-woman operation at times, and it's really put her behind. So with my discussion with Jenny, and I'm thinking that we need to ask Paula to come in and pay her another day per week here till we get Stephen on board full-time. So that's my thought on the issue.
So I'd like to make a motion that we approve up to 15 additional days for Paula to be in the office.
Okay. So Jeff move, or excuse me, Susie moves, Jeff seconds. Jenny's 15, you think that'll work okay, and we may not use all of those 15 days, but that would be a max? Think it'd be acceptable?
Yes.
Question, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous. Any other good for the order? Hearing none, I'm sorry?
I know you want to get out of here. I just wanted to thank you guys for allowing Lisa and I to do a two-day training at Lake Cumberland. We made a lot of connections, we learned a lot about small-town planning, downtown planning. Next year, if you guys want to go, it's only $25 for commissioners, and the department will pay for it. It's an all-day training, great meals, so I'll let you know about it. Thank you for letting us go.
Worth your time.
Very worthwhile, lots of notes we'll keep probably for years.
Good, good. Any other good motion to adjourn?
So move.
Jeff moves.
Second.
Ben seconds, all in favor, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.